Ladies and gentlemen, I want to invite, want to welcome everybody to our January the 5th regular board meeting. And we'll start it off, I do need a motion to excuse Billy Mashburn and Barbara McRae.
I salute.
Sir. All in favor? Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join us in the pledge of allegiance led by Vice Mayor Earl Curtis.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I assume everybody has read the proposed agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Okay, I'll call a motion, or a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion.
All in favor? I'll need a motion, I hope everyone's read the December the first board minutes, and I'll entertain a motion to approve it. Any questions, commission?
I have the motion to be approved.
All in favor? Our second. We have a public hearing scheduled for five minutes after seven, and it's just now seven o'clock. Not a managing counselor would be up there and go ahead with the public session?
No.
It's like 7:05. Okay, we have, it looks like according to the signature of Mr. Derrick has signed the public session. Do I have to come up there, Mr. Derrick?
Yes. We want to welcome you back.
Thank you, darling. I got your, I got your gifts.
Welcome, Mr. Derrick, it's always a pleasure.
Actually, Bob, just remember November, son. It's good to see the board again, Mr. Mayor, Board and Susten, how you do. And I'd like to thank y'all for putting the lights back on the streets, you know, you know which one I'm talking about. But I'll pay for the next two to string it all out, you know. Maggie's getting a little bit upset next door, you know, in front of my house. So that's over with. Now, the other thing is, two other topics is, I just got back about three weeks ago, I was gone for about seven, got a little missionary work in the woods, just kidding about that. But I hear that the county's gonna start going into, gonna try to get up a noise ordinance. And I was just curious, if the town is gonna parallel with them or enjoin with them, you know, come up with the same thing, 'cause what they have, we have, and what we have, they got the same thing. If you could come up with, you know, the same package, then you could say, you know, hold down the lawyers' pay and all that, you know how that goes. But have y'all thought about-
You missed one, let me up, Mr. Mayor, getting close.
We've got two minutes. But have y'all thought anything about that?
Well, the only complaints we've had have been from Warrior Street.
Oh, God.
Yes, actually, we have, and we are hashing it out right now. We're kind of waiting to see what the county comes up with. Right now, the noise things are complaint-driven, we send the police over there, and most of the time when they tell them to pipe down, they pipe down. Let's see what the county comes up with, and we'll certainly be taking a look at it.
Okay, and the other two things, another thing is, excuse me, is on Forest Avenue. Has, have y'all ever thought about repaving that thing? I know you're kind of low on money, but have you ever thought about rezinging Forest Avenue?
Where is, where is that on our priority list?
That is on the list, on the street rankings.
It is. Well, that's good. The last thing is old co, right there at Forest, you know, we've got that corner, when that water comes down through that, it's getting up under the sea, up under the asphalt. And in some places, already just about, you know, a foot up under. Now, as a way to remedy that, you get about three or four tons of rock, about like this, and you pack that, and you won't have a problem. I brought this up before, I mean, to you and, I think you, one time, in some previous, I think I got that word right. But that's about it, and I appreciate it. Good to see y'all back, and that's why I don't know what happened there, and I found you to come up to you. You got a new hairstyle, and you can't call him all that.
We've missed you on your mission trip.
Oh, thank you, Bob.
Well, as usual, there's some dissension up here. Okay, just we better move on into the public hearing. Ms. Moore, I'll catch you just in a minute, but the public hearing is scheduled for 7:05. This is a public hearing for rezoning petition for two parcels of land that are on Panel Lane, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing. I have nobody signed up for the, to speak on the public hearing. So that being said, Derrick, I mean, Justin? I'm sorry.
Bob, I was gonna address something in the public session concerning that rezoning. Should I say it now and then speak in the public session as well?
Which, which do you prefer it to be?
Either way. I had a couple of things, and I can do both if you want.
Yeah, if it's on the rezoning, certainly, yeah.
All right. We've seen several rezonings come across your table from this area in and around the landfill, which is now making transit, as well as, I think, has their, their space out there. And consistently, these people are being turned down, and I think that that's a mistake on the board's part, because these people, many of them bought their property before the landfill was even there, and they're not even within our town limits. And I think that what needs to be done is, they need to be given back their property rights. It's a lot of fun to champion the cause of decorating the town, or working with the police department, or working towards better water and sewer. But the reality is, is, is the citizens in this area that live near the landfill, which has expanded beyond its initial use, against the Unified Development Ordinance. While the landfill itself may have been grandfathered in, the, the extension of the landfill and the, the extension of making transit there, the only reason they're allowed is because that parcel was rezoned to industrial from residential one, which it had originally been zoned residential one. I don't know if, if any of you remember, some of the discussions I know came up when I was on staff here, was that the landfill was left as R1, so that there couldn't be expansion without community discussion. And I feel like that those people were silenced last time when they came to that rezoning. Some of them had previously tried to rezone their property, and they were turned down. So not only do I support this rezoning fully, and I think that each of you should consider supporting it, at very least, if you don't support it, I would encourage you to delay your vote, so you have a little bit more time to do research on it. That whole area, I believe that there's some screening of buffer ordinances that are being violated by the county's parcel, because it is based on use, and they have an industrial use, or in some cases, I think a C2 use would be the making transit up against residential property uses. And there are required thresholds between those, and not all of those uses are grandfathered in, and if the landfill expands, none of those uses will be grandfathered in because of the expansion. So I would encourage you to vote yes for this rezoning, as well as taking a closer look at the, the needs of that, that community in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Anyone else on the rezoning issue of Panel Lane? Mr. Sexton?
Yeah, in your package, you'll see some of the petition from Macon County on the rezoning for these two parcels off Panel Lane. The total, the total for the two parcels added up together is 22.99 acres. For our zoning ordinance, this is doesn't meet requirements for industrial, which is a minimum of one acre per parcel, again, this is only the two parcels. This did presently go to the planning board, the planning board looked over it, looked over all the impacts of it, and they did vote to approve it, or for the recommendation of approval of it to be rezoned. Also in your package, you will see the maps, attached maps showing the aerial and what is currently zoned. And also, you will find the consistency statement and the findings of fact from the planning board.
Okay, any further, any questions, discussion from the board, from Mr. Sexton? Okay, I'll declare this public hearing closed, since there's no further comment. Clear, close. Okay, Ms. Moore, did you have anything else you wanted to bring up in the public session?
I did have one.
Okay.
I brought this up before, but I did want to remind the board again that when the Unified Development Ordinance was adopted, all of the previous zoning codes and subdivision ordinances were struck from the code, from the code, which included the provision for creation and the running of the planning board. And there was no new provision put in the Unified Development Ordinance. So right now, there is no codified language for creating, maintaining, or using a planning board. The Board of Adjustment is in, I think, 152.070, but best I can tell, there is no longer a provision for the planning board, and has not been for the last six years. So, just thought I'd throw that out there again.
Okay. Allison, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, we'll certainly take that under advisement, and thank you.
Mayor Scott?
Yes.
I'm a resident of Macon Lane, and I, I came here tonight to find out about the buffer zones, how far down Panel Lane they go, do they start at the end of the making transit property, how far from the road back toward the existing landfill will the buffer be? I know that, that the Dalton property has been purchased, and also the property next to it, with the, with the house on it, but I'm wondering how far away from the road will there be a buffer for local us? We have to drive past that every day, we don't want to drive past the landfill every day to go home.
I'm not sure I can answer that. Is anyone here that can answer that? Derrick?
Ali has written in.
Yeah.
I could more than likely answer that question.
Okay.
The minimum, the minimum distance from the road to the boundary of the landfill is 300 feet. The minimum distance from the landfill to a private residence is 550. Given the proximity of a number of the residents along Panel Lane, it will probably be the 500-foot buffer that will be in place.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Does that, does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. Sorry I, oh, we didn't have an answer. Okay, the, we'll right on into the next item, which is the board decision on rezoning petition for the two parcels on Panel Lane that we just discussed. Any discussion from the town board? Comments, questions? All right, there being none, I will call for a motion to approve the rezoning petition for the two parcels on Panel Lane from residential R1 to industrial I. Okay, do I have a motion? I must motion to be approved. All in favor? Okay, that's enough. The next item of business is a proclamation for the Zonta International Amelia Earhart Day, which will be on January the 11th, and I think we have some representatives of Zonta. Sure, follow up. Need a, need a witness to my signing.
Okay, thank you. My name is Peggy Milton, I'm Vice President of the local Zonta Club, which is an organization which works to help improve the status of women. And I have here also the life of Darlene Promnick and Suzie Nicholson, who also moved as our, our chapter. And Zonta celebrates Amelia Earhart in the month of January. The Zonta Foundation funds a scholarship and has since 1938 in honor of Amelia Earhart, who was, of course, the plane pilot, and she was also a Zontian. The award goes to women pursuing advanced studies in aerospace engineering and science. And we have awarded 1,500 scholarships to women in 70 different countries at over $8 million. And we're here tonight to tell you that we are, we're proud to say that Area Two, which is North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, actually has an Amelia Earhart Fellow this year, and we will award the presentation of her wings and certificate at the Macon County Airport on January the 24th, it's a Saturday, at 2:00, and it is open to the public if you'd like to attend. And we thank you for allowing us this opportunity. Mayor Scott.
Thank you, Peggy. I will read the proclamation. Whereas Amelia Earhart was the first woman to fly solo across the Atlantic, the first woman to be awarded the U.S. Distinguished Flying Cross, and the first woman transatlantic passenger, and whereas Amelia Earhart made her record flight from Hawaii to California on January the 11th, 1935, and January the 11th has been designated Amelia Earhart Day by members of Zonta International, a global organization of executives and professionals working together to advance the status of women who have long recognized this woman of courage, character, and culture. And whereas Amelia Earhart encouraged women to expand their horizons by exploring occupations and holding positions beyond those traditionally held by women. And whereas Amelia Earhart was a beloved member of Zonta International, the fortunes lost in the Pacific on a flight attempting to circle the globe by air in 1937. And whereas, in 1938, a year after her disappearance, Zonta International established its annual graduate fellowships in aerospace-related sciences and aerospace-related engineering, which since that time has awarded 1,438 fellowships totaling more than $8.6 million, given to 1,014 women from 70 countries as a living memorial to her. I'm Lady Robert Scott hereby recognized January the 11th, 25th, as Amelia Earhart Day in the town of Franklin, North Carolina. And Peggy, after looking at the qualifications of this young lady, I think someday we're gonna be able to say there was an astronaut that visited the Macon County Airport. It is absolutely amazing what this young lady has accomplished.
Yes, I failed to talk about her specifically, but her name is Fanny Gussam. She is actually from Belgium, and she has a degree in engineering already, and she a master's in, from school in Sweden, and now she is at Duke doing her doctorate, and she's in her third year. So I think it would be a pleasure if you'd like to come out and meet her.
Yeah, I hope everybody that's interested will be there. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt this proclamation. Make motion. Second? All in favor? Okay. Can they pass that down to clerk? Okay, the next item of business is a proclamation for Macon County Nursing and Rehabilitation Center, and I will read that proclamation. Whereas the town of Franklin, Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center valued the health, safety, and welfare of all our citizens of the town of Franklin. And whereas, every day, the staff at Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center make a positive impact by providing quality health care to people of all ages in a diverse health care setting through respite care, a variety of individuals from diverse backgrounds from our immediate community. We are local folks providing health care for our local folks, enriching the lives of our citizens of Macon County every day, and contribute to the dynamic culture and economic prosperity of our town, county, and state. And whereas, Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center started on a journey with the American Healthcare Association in 2011, making a commitment to quality and achieved the status of the Bronze Award in October of 2011. We are continuing on this pathway. Most recently, we were awarded the status of the Silver Award Achievement in Quality in October of 2014 for our continued progress on our health care journey. And whereas, there are over 6, 36,000 nursing centers in the nation. Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center was one of 77 facilities nationwide to be a recipient of the Silver Award status, and one of only three in the state of North Carolina. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bob Scott, serving as the mayor of the town of Franklin, do hereby recognize Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center for achieving this millstone, milestone, in wishing them the very next, the very best and the next step in the journey, going for the status of the Gold Award, the Excellence in Quality. In witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and pause to be affixed the official seal for the town of Franklin, North Carolina, this fifth day of January 2015. Do I hear a motion to accept this proclamation? What motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Mr. Briggs, we're expecting a Gold Award next year. Okay. And I'll pass this down to the clerk, to have the countersign. Congratulations, that's a fine, fine award.
Thank you, sir.
Can I speak just for a moment?
Certainly.
I didn't do it alone, come on. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the town board. My name is Richard Brady, I'm the administrator of Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. Tonight I have with me Nancy Enriquez. Nancy's a registered nurse, has a bachelor's degree in nursing, is our director of nurses. She's been employed at our facility for over 19 years. I have Denise Allen, she's a social service assistant, and she's approaching her one year of employment with us. And I myself have been the administrator there for approximately eight years. But we'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you for recognizing us and our success at our facility. We did embark on this program in 2011, and, and the, and the Bronze Award's a commitment to quality. And then you do a lot of data collecting, and then, and focus on outcomes, quality initiatives, quality measures, and things like that, to achieve the next status. And that was the Silver Award that we, we received in October 2014. And we're focused now on the Gold Award, and that is the Excellence in Quality. And I just want to say that we appreciate your support here tonight, and, and recognizing us. It certainly couldn't have been done without various staff members in the departments of nursing, dietary, social work, activities, environmental services, our medical staff, our physician services, quality improvement administration. Over the past four years, we've worked collectively, and had many, many meetings, and, and subgroups, and et cetera, that focus on improving the customer service and the quality care that we provide. And we like to, you know, one neat thing that we noticed when we were working on this is we're saying it's, it's local folks taking care of local folks. Now, some of us local folks are transplants, but we're still now local folks, taking care of local folks. We see a lot of bigger faces as far as residents there, that you've seen in employment, various positions in the, in the community. And we have a good percentage of Medicare, short-term care residents coming in for an average length of stay of 24 to 28 days, returning to the community. And some of the other services that we have enhanced and, and are providing now also is outpatient therapy services. So if you're there for short term, and you need continued care on an outpatient basis for continued care purposes, since you already have a relationship with the therapist, now you have the option of coming back to our facility for outpatient. So we're, we're certainly focused in attempting to, you know, continue this, this journey, and have a positive outcome, and reach the gold status. It is a challenge to go from the bronze, to the silver, to the gold, and sometimes it takes some healthcare providers eight to 10 years to get where we are now in from 2011, 2014. So we are hopeful that we can put Franklin on the map sooner instead of later, and be a recipient of the, the Gold Award. And what that would mean is that there would be, we will complete our application, submit it to the American Healthcare Association in Washington, DC, goes through an evaluation process through eight board members that are examiners through the National Ball Ridge criteria, and then if, if meets a certain grade, then they make the determination to actually have three to four examiners visit our facility, and at that time, that could possibly be in July of this year, and they come in, evaluate, and validate the information that's been provided, and, and actually visit with stakeholders in the community, such as you, such as the board of county commissioners, various people at the health department, the hospital, the discharge planners, and et cetera. Stakeholders that we share and refer residents and patients back and forth with, validate the service and everything that we've stated that we've been providing to the community. So stay tuned, and we'll see how well we do, and I appreciate your support very much. Thank you.
We'll be seeing you next year.
All right, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, we're having an update from the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Todd Mason is gonna present it. This is the information. Welcome, Todd.
Thank you for having me, and taking the time. Appreciate you giving me a chance to come and speak for you for just a couple of minutes, and give you a brief update on any items that are going on with us, as opposed to the ABCs in the state, which will affect us and essentially affect you overall. Just to give you a brief update, our recently completed year of 2013, 14 showed a 3% increase in sales, which was very good, considering the way the economy was just slowly improving, very slowly. We were very depressed to the way that sales increased over that period of time. Didn't know, in talking in the summer the other day, if you were aware or not. I know the town has to have a yearly audit, an annual audit. Well, we do too, and I didn't know if you were aware of that. We have to have, the NBC Commission in Raleigh appoints an auditor to, and we don't have any say in that, they just appoint them, and ours is out of Asheville. And they do an audit on us, which we then submit to you, to the town, and then occasionally, whoever the auditors are with the town, will contact our auditors, and if they have questions or anything like that. We've had to do that for the past 20 years, and 20 consecutive years, we have had a clean audit, perfectly clean, no, no problems whatsoever, they said everything was looking good. The, just to give you an idea on the numbers that everybody's looking at, we're basically spot-on with our profit ratio that we're giving back to the town. As you're aware, the auditors, they do a calculation based upon other ABC boards of our size and our criteria, meaning the number of people that we could possibly be serving in western North Carolina, in our area, with another ABC board of our size. We're not talking store size, we're talking county size, the number of people. And basically, after you go through that, then they also look at, well, does the store or the town own the building, or are they leasing their building? And that plays a big, a big part in the profit ratio at the end of the year. But we're roughly, right now, we're giving the town of Franklin $70,000 a year. We have them for the past five or six years, and then there's a breakdown on that page that you can see, that I passed out to you, on what the profit ratio was in previous years, ever since our inception. And we were 20 years old this past November. It doesn't, I don't know if that sounds like a long time to you, but it really does, it seems like it's flown by, it doesn't seem like we've been there 20 years. But our, the story, if you don't come in, then so be it. You don't- You don't have to buy anything, but come on in and take a look at it. We rank in the top 50 of ABC boards in the state of North Carolina, in retrospect being the size of a store that is clean, very well stocked, knowledgeable staff, things of that criteria. So there's 223 boards, and we rank in the top 50 in that. So I'm very proud of that, proud of my staff. The store's very clean, very spacious, and I intend to keep it that way, so. Other than that, a couple of the items that the state is looking at, and this is the governor, Kevin McCrory, will eventually address this, I guess, with the legislature and whatever his plan is for the next couple of years and whatever. Some of the things they're wanting to see is possibly Sunday sales. Of course, that'll be up to the ABC board. Mr. Sutton, Alton Sutton is one of the board members for the ABC board, he's here today. Our board chairman is Pat Patilla, who is unable to attend, and Wayne Swin. Another item would be selling non-alcoholic items such as shot glasses, cigars, things like that. They're throwing that up as an option. And you're saying, well, why are they doing that? I don't know. I don't know. They're just doing that as more profitability for everybody, so that's just another option they're looking at. Extending the hours is another one. We're already operating under the guidelines in North Carolina. The maximum we can do is 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and that's what we're operating. We can do less if we feel like we need to do less, but we try to make it accessible for everybody. But right now, they're, the state may be looking at trying to extend the hours, and I don't know, I would say opening up at 7:00, possibly closing at midnight, something of that nature. But that doesn't mean we in Franklin have to do that by any means. Sample testings in the liquor stores is another item they're looking at. And the other thing is selling lottery tickets. And so I'm hoping that bypasses quickly, so. I don't have to get into that, but that's another item they're looking at, so. But I thought I would bring you up to date, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them to you. If I don't know or have the answer right here in front of me, I'll be glad to find out and get it to you.
Did you say that there's something about sampling?
They're talking about that, yes.
Now, are they eligible to sample?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They're talking about sampling the needles, too, so.
Yeah.
Does that mean they're going to come in and uncorep the bottle?
Yes, they'll have, there's still representatives that'll show up at the store, they'll be showing their products. Basically, they would be new items, it wouldn't be a standard item such as a champagne.
And they're going to drive back to Raleigh?
Yes, yes, I guess. That doesn't make any sense.
No, no, it does not.
I've thought about that myself.
They've been active an hour or so, then they start telling me a lot of things.
That's very true.
And sales are going to be...
Yeah, that's right. And people tend to buy more during that period of time, I guess.
As I've said in the past, the greatest problem that this board has is the North Carolina legislature. I'm sorry, but it sounds like all of these, I bet you a lot of this will not come back to the town or the county.
Yes, sir. And that just puts more of a hardship and a burden on that.
I'm not going to make a conversation here. How about the rest of the board here?
That's what I said at this time.
What's, what is the status or any future plans on larger store expansion, new store?
Okay, right now, our lease expires at the end of December of 2015.
Yes.
We can renew the lease. Of course, the shopping center, as you're well aware, would like for us to stay there. And of course, of course, there's people right here that probably would like for us to stay there too, I guess. That's up to the ABC board of directors and the town board, and whatever you want us to do. We don't need any, we don't need larger space, by no means. We could get by with just a little less, we just took this space because we had our room, the 3,200 square feet that we had been in for a number of years down in the area in the shopping center. So we're not really, nothing has been presented to us in the way of land, if that's what you're asking. Or are they, is our board actively looking or anything of that nature? Well, no, but the shopping center hasn't approached us either on what the rate increase is going to be for the next period of time that we...
I know last time we had, y'all were involved, we were, if there was some negotiation with the owners to keep the lease down.
Yes, sir.
And I knew that would hold until this next lease.
Until the next, I agree. And we were all aware of that. They, they wanted us there, and they need us looking to leave. And whatever happened in the past, they kept the lease down in order to keep us, keep us where we at, which I'm glad because it worked out in the long run for us to stay there, since everything else fell through with the way of land and other buildings. But now then, we really don't know what's going to happen. I agree with Mr. Jameson, they'll probably increase drastically, because they'll say, well, if they're going to stay there, we're going to make the money.
I, I really can't speak for the board, but speaking personally as the mayor, I would hate to see us get into the lottery business.
Yes, sir.
I just don't think that's a function of the town, the town government. That's my two cents work, and maybe some of the board...
They're all for the sampling.
Hmm? They're all...
No wonder they wanted to stop the shopping.
That's...
They wanted us to sell it.
I agree.
Okay, any further comments or questions of Mr. Mason?
Thanks, Todd, we appreciate you coming to the board.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor.
It's always good to have you.
Good to see you.
Alton, thank you for coming, sir. Sure. I appreciate it. Do you have anything you wanted to say?
Uh, no. No, I'm, I'm just, Todd. He does a great job, I'll just say that about him.
Thank you very much.
Let's see here, Mr. Sutcliffe, you want to present an appointment to the town of Franklin, the Board of Adjustments?
As you know, we have a vacancy on the planning board, Board of Adjustment. Mr. Hall Phillips is going to renew his seat, and the town, we came back a couple months back, I think it maybe was in October, maybe? We asked to advertise it, and we advertised it in the paper, we ran it on the town's website for the whole time after that. And in that time frame, we've received, we've received one application, but still took it to the planning board, requested a resume, they reviewed it, and they came up with the recommendation for the appointment to, Brandon, Brandon McMahon to the planning board. He lives in town, this is an in-town seat, he lives on Bedwell Street, and is very energetic and eager to serve on the planning board.
Any comments from the board, any questions of Mr. Sutcliffe? I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. McMahon to the town planning board?
That we put Brandon McMahon on board.
Okay, that's right. All in favor? Okay. All right. The next item is a resolution to authorize the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of a voluntary annexation petition in 44 Lower Green. Any discussion from the board on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to...
Yes, Mayor, I do think the board, there are a few items that are connected with this matter that I think the board ought to consider. Not least of which is before, in expressing no opinion about whether the board should move ahead with investigation of this petition. In your agenda package is a copy of the voluntary annexation policy that the board adopted some years ago, and it contains in it a statement that the town will not consider voluntary annexation of non-contiguous property located outside of the defined ETJ. Those of you who are on the board at that time will recall that when that, with that particular language was adopted, in view of several petitions that were coming from landowners that were out further, further afield in the county and sort of seeking, well, I thought, one thought was that the majority there impetus to try to petition into the town was to be able to sell alcohol. Or for other reasons, or whatever they were, the town's expression at that time was just a desire not to have to go that far out to provide services. You are not bound by this policy unless you decide to abide by it. It's, it's not a forever and ever binding, it's policy anyway, it's not, does not have force of law, it's not ordinance. Also voluntary annexation is just that, it is voluntary on the part of the property owner who is bringing it to you for their consideration, and it's voluntary on the part of the town to consider taking it in. So where you are in the stage of, of the process to just consider this annexation is a direction to the clerk. The board will also need to consider this policy, if it's something that you want to change in view of this petition. You've got at least two meetings to consider that, because again, the steps are, you're going to, well, if it is the will of the board, you're going to direct the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of it tonight. He will report back to you at your next meeting, and then you have to set a hearing for the next meeting as to whether or not you're going to annex. So those are some things we needed to highlight for you. Okay, yeah, some of us pointed out to me that when this discussion happened was February 2011, and so it's, it's been...
Well, in the, in the long run, after the investigation, we go ahead with the investigation, but have, have we not turned down other requests for voluntary annexation for the same basic reasons?
I, yes, sir. We did. You have, it's been since 2011, I mean, I don't know if there have been any since 2011.
There's not many since I've been on the board, but reading back news media and stuff, I know there was others that came up.
And again, just, I don't want to have a thought, I don't have any dog in the fight, and I don't want to influence your decision. Yes, that was the reason that some were turned down in 2011, but again, you're not bound by this policy unless the board decides it wants to be on a continuing basis. And so you can consider, there, there is no sort of precedential effect of having turned those down or not letting others in. It's completely voluntary on the part of the town in the sense that any of them that come along, you can decide that you do want to give them consideration.
Well, there's other positives for, especially a commercial establishment like the one that's being considered. There are other positives, such as low insurance ratings, they would get, town Franklin has the lowest insurance ratings for commercial, you know, in the rest of the state, so that is a big plus. But they're being annexed if not because they're, that area is not presently in the Franklin Fire District, it's in another fire district.
Right. And also, they're annexed, they have access to less expensive water and sewer, and just frankly speaking, we don't need less revenue on, on the properties that we annex in, as it's costing us to annex some of these, these properties that, like that, that we're being faced with.
Is it possible for me to speak, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, go right ahead, sir.
If I could, I'd love to, and I appreciate you letting me. I talked to you just about this a little bit, and like I say, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the board. My name's Steve Isaacs, I'm with the owner of Pioneer Petroleum Company, and I'm from Maristown, Tennessee, but really I'm from Marion, North Carolina, that's where I was born and raised, and went to school at Western Carolina University, so this is kind of safe like home. But we have 28 convenience stores presently that we own and operate, and the 29th one we're going to open in two weeks in Burnsville, North Carolina. I've gone through the same process in Burnsville. And you're right, the main reason that, every one of our stores are in the city limits, and our insurance is considerably less expensive. And we get fire protection, we're very strict, as, as, we do sell beer in some of our stores, and we're very strict as far as that, so we want police protection. So those are the main reasons, and we've been looking in Franklin a long time. We've got seven stores in North Carolina right now, and I've always thought that the corridor that we're looking at down through there is prime for development. Probably five years ago, I talked to the gentleman owns a shopping center there, I can't remember, it was before the chicken place opened. And that was in the city limits, I was going to buy that property, but it just didn't work out. But, you know, you don't really, going down that corridor, there's really no city property available. And the reason we looked at this one, it's our standard, it is contiguous, because the property across the street is in the city, and according to orders, what I read, it can be across the road. So we need to be on the going-home side, the going-out-of-town side. I've looked at the other side, but I, I like this side better. If I can show you what I planned to build, this may give you some idea of quality of the asset that would be going in your town. This store happens to be in the one we just opened six months ago in Maristown, Tennessee. We have one very similar to this on Airport Highway in Asheville between the Walmart and the Target. I don't know if you've been over that way lately, but that's the newest store we have in North Carolina besides the one in Burnsville that we're going to open in two weeks. Using the one in Asheville, for example, I was the first person to open a business right there. Since then, I've got a Bojangles beside me, got Dick's Sporting Goods in front, and the motel's coming in behind me. I know all the owners, and they say, you're the reason we come to you. As you see, I'm unbranded, I'll be very competitive, and I'll have a lot, I'll pull in a lot of business, that's, the store will do a lot of business. And if, you know, if that's an incentive to grow the town, that area, this is one way to do it, I'll be honest with you. In the city of Burnsville, I was the first property annexed in 39 years. And they annexed me six months ago, and I started building a month later, and I'll be opening in two weeks. Since then, there's a, a Pizza Hut open beside me, and a motel's going behind me. So we are a traffic generator, and that's what a lot of those businesses like. So I hope you'll consider what we like to do, we'll, I'll be a good neighbor and I'll be a good business for you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutcliffe.
In addition to the, it's going to be a gas station, small convenience store type, type thing, restaurant?
Yes, yeah, on that, on that, it shows a subway.
Yeah, but I'm...
But I, but there's a subway down below me.
Yeah.
I have Taco Bell's, I have Burger King's, I've got Huddle House, so I have several franchises I can fit in there, so. And then also, we also have other people that may put a store in there.
Car wash.
You know, that's a possibility, it really is. I've got, I've got about 12 car washes, so that is a definite possibility.
Yes, sir.
Especially since we have sold. And there's probably a need down through there.
Steve, I'm glad you may tell them how many employees is coming for a job. How many jobs will be...
At a particular store, that store will have about 15 employees, a manager, assistant manager, about 15 employees, and we pay our people pretty good, probably higher than most do in the industry.
That's right. Okay. Any further discussion from the board?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to inform the board members, if, if it is the will of the board to adopt this resolution, and by the way, that's what the motion was to adopt the resolution and instruct the court to investigate the sufficiency of the petition, just keep in mind both with that, and I do think we need to reconsider this policy language. I will have to give some thought in whether or not non-contiguous in this policy means non-contiguous to the corporate boundary or non-contiguous to any town property. Because I think you, I think Mr. Isaacs is right, it is contiguous to a satellite, but I don't think that's what it meant. I think it meant not, not contiguous to the corporate boundary. The town board will keep its options open even if you just proceed with this process at this stage, is the thing that I want to tell you. And if, if the will of the board is at the next stage that you decided you don't want to consider annexation, you keep that option, okay?
So the, the board, any further discussion? Get a motion?
I would like, I know we've got to look at this other policy, but I would like for us to take, we've got a couple of months to look at all of that and see if we want to change it. If we don't, then it's pretty much no void, but I would like for us to go ahead with looking into it and investigating into it.
If you want to go ahead with the resolution, if we...
Yeah, I would make a motion if we would go ahead with the resolution, unless you want some more comments or something.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Three and one. Okay, Bree, before you, you have a bid for the property that's located at 381 East Main Street. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's an award.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's an award. I'm willing, the town attorney chiming in on this as well. What we're looking at is, a few months ago, the town had purchased property located at 381 East Main Street, and I wanted just to kinda start some discussion about starting to solicit bids to move that property, and with that being said, the town attorney has some suggestions in how we can move forward by doing that.
Your basic options are, I mean, it's been a while since we've considered this sort of thing, so I'm gonna give you the thumbnail overview of what your options are. To sell real property that isn't owned by the town, first, it's gotta be declared surplus and not be to the town purposes, which we did at the time that we resolved to buy this property, we went ahead and declared the surplus, so that's not something we have to do. To sell real property, then, your options are limited to advertising for sealed bids, which would be a process where we run advertisements that says, you know, say, "Submit to us your bids at least thirty days from now, it can't be more, we'll open them all at once, and then bring to the town board the highest bidding." To bring you a negotiated offer, meaning we will have some offer and a starting point, and I may actually have one, and we'll get to that in just a second. Or to go with a public auction. Or you can exchange property, but we can consider that if somebody wanted to exchange some other piece of property for that one, we can do that then, but we don't have that offer, and so there's not much point in talking about it. A public auction, I don't, I've never done, and I don't, the ones that I've done have been in a context of closure, and I just don't think they're a real good way to drum up much interest in a piece of property. So, it would be my recommendation that you either authorize the manager and myself to move forward with an advertisement for sealed bids, or on the other hand, you have an offer from an individual, who wanted to remain anonymous for now, but that's okay, we can do that at this stage, an offer from an individual to purchase that property for fifty thousand You can either instruct me to go get a better offer, and that would start, or the manager and myself to explore better offers, and that would start us down the path of that negotiated offer advertisement, upset bid process. Or you could authorize me to advertise it, see if there are any upset bids in the next ten days after it's advertised, or you could go ahead and direct us to advertise for sealed bids, and we'll have a thirty or forty-five day process to collect those and bring you back the best offer we can. The bottom line is, you keep your, again, it's, nothing is final until the board passes on it again. So you'll get to consider that offer, if at the end of the sealed bid process or the upset bid advertisements, it's still just not a sufficient offer, you can turn it down at that time, and we are back where we were. We still have the property to be able to try to find a better offer for it.
Any discussion from the board? Questions? I guess, I don't know that I have a question as much as I would wonder about if it wouldn't be better to go ahead and advertise the sealed bids or sealed bids. I don't know how many people know that this property might be up for sale.
Right. And we certainly have not advertised it.
Right, and that's my concern.
Well, it gets advertised either way.
Yeah.
Under either that bid process or the sealed bid process or private offering negotiation.
Well, I don't believe we need a motion tonight or anything, or do we just want a consensus of the board?
No, I don't think we need a motion in direction to either propose to accept this fifty thousand dollar offer and have me go begin an upset bid process, or not, and that's fine. Alternatively, authorize the manager and myself to advertise for sealed bids and conduct a sealed bid process.
What would the board like to do on this?
I'd like to see a sealed bid.
Sealed bid, okay. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to what's-
I'd make a motion that we deal sealed bids for that property on East Main Street.
In a second, all in favor? That, Madam Manager, that- Counselor, I'm not sure, I know what the authorized counter signatories are, so I'll let you present it.
Yeah, I apologize for the fifty cent word there. That was not my choice, that's a rule made by your all-wise legislators, who-
Okay, that's not a French word?
No, 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 it looks like it, I know. I said some French words trying to get it spelled right in the resolution. Under state law, the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, you are required to designate, and I don't know that we've done this in some time, is the only reason that we're visiting this now, and we couldn't find where, we knew we had documentation of it. You are, there is an automatic signatory, and that is your appointed finance officer who can write checks. They are required, unless the town board decided you just wanted to do away with counter signatures altogether, which I don't recommend, and I don't think your auditors would like either if you did that. You're required to name the people who can countersign, and typically, that's gonna be your manager. So what we've done here, what this resolution does, is make explicit that that is your manager, it is any interim or deputy finance officer that you might ever designate. And it also authorizes your town manager to name another person to be a countersignatory. They won't be able to write checks, because state law doesn't allow the administration to just name who's gonna be able to write checks. But for convenience of the town administration, your manager will be able to name other personnel and report back to you who they are. So that's what the resolution does, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, the way that the resolution probably will read is that the countersignatory beyond the town manager will be appointed by the town manager.
Correct. And requires you to report back to you who it is.
You're in the best shape to know who it should be.
And I would like to inform the board, one reason this thing came up with the recent accounting technician position that we hired, we do need to allow Emily Nickerson to be one of the countersignatories on these checks for payroll purposes and for other invoices.
Okay. So you need a motion to that effect?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, would someone make the motion?
Okay.
So you're gonna be doing a resolution to designate and authorize countersignatories?
You just wanted to say one word. She just wanted to say it.
Sounds that right?
Yes.
Yeah, it looks pretty good. Go have a session. All, all in favor? All right. Thank you, Counselor. Now, we come to the sticky one here, the charitable solicitations ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I think that we have beaten this horse pretty well half to death anyway, and I'm happy to answer the question you have about it, and I think you all familiar with the purpose of it by now, which is to institute that statutorily authorized requirement of a two million dollar insurance policy and a permit process for solicitations in the streets.
Counselor, I hate to take you to this, but I've got some reservations about the ordinance. Has the board read this ordinance yet? Let me, one thing, I'm not sure we define charitable. Have we defined charitable? Will that-
The statute did it for us, I think, is the answer. It is, what it says is solicit contributions. Now, what, so that's the activity that we're getting at, is soliciting contributions in the industries. Now, charitable, I don't know that that's with people send and rote soliciting contributions.
Right. And I think that's understood, but that could also be the various groups, local-
It'd be-
Any group, yeah.
It would be anyone that wants to stand in the streets, and the travel portions is where this is affecting.
Right, right.
To solicit.
Okay. The, let me just run down what some of my concerns are, if the board will indulge me just for a minute. Do we really require paying a fee of twenty-five dollars per day before any permit may be issued?
Again, that's not my creation, that's, the statute that authorizes us to adopt this regulation says may, may, and you don't have to, but I would ask you to consider staff time in evaluating these permits and making sure that they're, you know, they're properly filed and followed, but you may require up to twenty-five dollars per permit per day.
And then we've got the liability insurance and the amount of at least two million dollars.
And that's, again, that's statutory. So if you're gonna allow these charitable solicitations in this, or these, sorry, solicitations of donations in the streets, you're, this is, this is the way to do it, and that two million dollar amount is in the statute.
Is that protecting us, or is it protecting the solicitor?
It protects the, it protects the general public, including the person who is standing in the street and subject to getting hit, and, but it's not really required to protect the town. It does two things. The policy that they get has to name the town as additional insurer, but the statute also says the town takes on no liability for having passed this regulation. So you're not gonna get into, "I can't promise you won't be sued." And, you know, if you have a horrific traffic accident, and somebody's standing in the streets soliciting donations, gets hit, there's no doubt. Anybody, anybody and everybody who's available is gonna get sued. But that statute and the general law on governmental immunity says you're not liable. So, but you'd be doubly protected with the, that policy as well.
It would also protect this if something was solicited in the streets and created a nuisance which pulled the attention away from a driver, and they ran over someone else driving across the street.
Yes. I guess the other couple of things I've got here is that the issuance of a permit under this chapter, conducting with a solicitation authorized, are not governmental functions of the town. In other words, we don't have anything to do with that.
Yes, and that is a part of the phrase, that the clause in that statute that makes clear the town is not responsible for what somebody else goes out and does in the middle of the street.
Okay, and so there's, if they fail to follow a law enforcement officer's order to cease solicitation, they shall be guilty of a class two misdemeanor. That's already true, is it not? If an officer tells you to move on and not to do something, and you, that's obstructive resist and delay, is it not? Sorry, you're class two misdemeanor.
Yes, I don't know if it's a class two, I don't know what the class is during the statute.
That's what I'll say, I don't think, I don't know why, I just pulled a class two-
The officer was gonna be approaching them to see if they had a permit, were permitted to do so, and had the injury, so that's on what it would apply.
Well, this is, if they go down there and tell them to move on, if they don't, we-
Yes, yeah. But right now, they can't tell them to move on.
Okay. Okay, one of I have here is the other solicitations that are prohibited, and it says that no person shall stand on any street, highway, or right of way, excluding sidewalks, while soliciting or attempting to solicit any employment, business, or contributions from the driver or occupants of any vehicle. So, I don't know, I- That looks like that's restrictive, but I'm gonna go along with whatever you guys wanna do on it, but.
I will just tell you that the operative language of this ordinance is taken almost wholesale directly out of the statute. I didn't have to get creative with this thing, this is, this is what state law authorizes to do about these solicitations happening in the streets.
But this is not state law?
It is not state law in the sense that it, we are authorized as a, as a division of the state to, you know, political subdivisions and enact, but no, the state didn't say this is law, no matter what the county says.
Okay, so we're at state law, and just about there, we just follow this. So if we put this into the form of an ordinance, we're locked into that. We're locked into a situation.
Subject to your ability to alter an ordinance.
Whereas right now, we sort of are in a position of we can do things on a complaint basis, if somebody's in any traffic.
We don't know if they would-
Well, yeah, I don't think that we've done-
Question for attorney, the intersections they can stand at for traffic, pedestrian safety, if that's an issue down here near Hardee's, we feel like that's a major traffic-
If you're on one of them, sorry.
Can we determine where they can solicit from? Can we limit certain intersections? For me, that's a traffic hazard.
I think that, I think that's the area that we became concerned with, pushing for some type of ordinance.
Is your question, should the ordinance be limited to that intersection? I think the answer is no, I think it's generally a-
No, if that apply, can we determine what intersections they use? If I say that's a major traffic hazard for pedestrians, would you prefer to get somewhere else?
We're giving him a last-
Let me look into that. I think the answer is yes, because you, the, the safety, health, safety preservation of the, and the water preservation of the town generally encompasses, I don't, whoever you are, whatever you're doing, you're causing a hazard right here, and I'm gonna tell you to go elsewhere. So, I think the answer is yes, but we'll need to address it outside of this ordinance anyway.
Okay. If you're creating a public safety issue, I think an officer has the power right now to tell them to move on, by Franklin.
I don't think so.
I do, I think they do.
It hasn't been working.
Well, they're gonna have to, they're going to have to show that they're not creating a traffic hazard.
I was asking, are we more liable by not having a permitting?
I think so, because if the act is, you will have-
We just allow them to go out in the street and they get hit, are we more liable than if we're permitted them and have, or it's showing that they have insurance?
I think so, because this method, as you, making sure that whoever is doing that has met these requirements, and it also is-
And them saying that they're taking on their responsibility.
And that the town has it, and doesn't, and isn't responsible for what they do, you will have invoked that, that much more protection for the town.
So, let me ask the chief this, have we had any complaints other than down in Hardee's?
That's the only one I'm aware of.
That's the only one I'm aware of. That's the only one I'm aware of. But in passing this ordinance, are we going to impact some other charitable organizations that are down soliciting where the old Frankham Motel used to be? And if a cheerleader gets a little excited and jumps out the road with the car wash sign-
And they do.
Well, if, keep in mind, this doesn't operate in, it's in the travel portion only, so you know, not sidewalks.
I'm talking about, though, if they should get off the sidewalk, they shouldn't get off, they some?
I know they should.
They should, but they do.
You deal with teenagers very often.
Having an ordinance and telling them what the ordinance is, prevent them making from getting injured.
And I also think if we specify that one street, it's just as easily they will go, so if we keep it all rounded, it's any place that they're in the streets, if we just say that one specific street, they will easily try to go someplace else.
They'll just move to a hat spot. They'll just move down to hat spot.
It's easy to move dangerous intersection.
Is the ordinance, is the ordinance is being presented, is it being presented to clear up one particular situation, or is it gonna clear up a whole lot of situations?
Mr. Mayor, I think that, well-
I was just gonna say, it could potentially clear up a lot of other situations down the road, just because we haven't had the situations yet, there's a potential, picks up a bad situation happening if they don't have someone protecting us and the-
Out of all the complaints that I receive, that by far is the most, and I hear it, I hear it every week, when I hear Hardee's, nothing else, I do hear it every week, when you're gonna do something about it, so. But we can't stop it, but we can, we can enforce it.
We can't stop it, but we can enforce it.
And I think that's a good point, and another reason, Mr. Mayor, is I'm not sure we know 100% how big the problem is, because we don't know who's out there. They're already out there before anybody knows anything about it. And that's why the permitting process will help.
Are they not coming to get a permit from you all?
No, they are not.
No, because we have no reason...
Really, parade permits.
Well, we have, we do have a parade permit that pretty much covers it, this.
Yeah, well, no, if it's parade, it's not the same as...
Well, I don't know it. Look how you define parade.
It's a parade event, usually.
So, it's any kind of an event that would be in the street. And we require you going to the chief, or to his designated person to get a permit. Right now, the NCAE wanted to do a march down Main Street on the sidewalks, and they had to get a permit, because they would cross the street. There was going to be a demonstration out on, what's the name of that road? Almond Drive. And they were going to have to get a permit just to stand...
Because we have a, there's an ordinance in the town against, like, picking up stuff like that, which that would have fell under.
Right.
That's why we go.
Is anybody ready to vote if we discuss this?
But if you move them from this place down here, chief, their next place might be right in front of the viadways, you know.
But they're going to be where the traffic lines are at, when they get the cars.
I think if they want to do it, they ought to move to the sidewalk.
That's right.
And that way, it keeps everybody out the center of the road, it doesn't curtail all of it. The cheerleaders evidently do very well off the streets, and other organizations that I've seen, too. But this is, have been a steady barrage of complaints about what's going on, and nobody seems to know who they are. I'm not even sure they know who they are.
I don't think they're from Macon County.
We know that.
We know that.
I don't think anyone's complaining about the shiners going out in the intersection and raising the lights.
It's too bad, it's too bad Ms. McRae is not here, because there was an article in the press and in Macon County News as well, that somewhat exposed them, that they claim to be part of raising funds for a church over in Asheville. The church in Asheville says, "Who? What?"
"Not even us folks."
Yeah, we're aware of that, that's one reason we're wanting something in place that eliminates this problem.
Can we restrict the Macon County organizations?
You may have then grounds to get them on fraud.
Yeah, but if you don't have an ordinance...
Oh, no, you...
They're just politicians, right?
No, but if you break the law, if you misrepresent for the solicitation of funds, then you do have a case. I'm a little concerned about the First Amendment question.
I would kind of like to make the motion that we go on this.
Okay, I'll entertain that motion. What is your motion?
I would like to make the motion that we're asking the ordinance to adopt, have them to adopt a resolution to be able to have them permit, to be permitted and everything.
As presented?
Mm-hmm.
As presented, no changes.
We can tweak it down a little bit if you see that's appropriate.
We need to identify this.
I think sometimes it's easier to pass an ordinance than it is to revise it, but... Okay, we have a motion?
I have one.
Second, all in favor? Okay, that passes. All right, couple of announcements. The town hall offices are going to be closed Monday, January the 19th, for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The town board retreat is going to be Saturday, January the 24th, at 9:00 in the town hall boardroom. And before we adjourn, I want to go around the table and see if anybody has any new business or business they want to bring up. None here, okay.
We have an idea, an agenda for retreat.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have anything we'd like to see brought up from the board?
Yes, we have some. Right now, really looking at the water plant, I've got some maybe presenters coming to touch on what we're looking at there. But yeah, you guys think anything, please feel free to go on.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that everybody come with something that they'd like to see as prioritized, major things we'd like to do in the coming year. And for the media, y'all quit talking among yourselves just a minute. I want to bring to your attention the Region A meeting on January the 26th. It's at the Boiler Room. We have Paul Meyer coming, and Paul Meyer is the Executive Director of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and I think he's going to talk about some of the legislative goals for the coming session of the legislature. Y'all might get the story out of that. All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor of adjournment? That's that.